Okay, I'll call the special meeting to order for Monday, July 16th, 2018, according to the agenda. Let's have the attendance roll call.
Mr. Gentry?
Here.
Mr. Garin?
Here.
Mr. Troy?
Here.
Mr. Quagliano?
Here.
Mrs. Melendi?
Here.
Mr. Fleck?
Here. Okay, we're all here. Next item is Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next item is public comment per Policy 2-230. Mr. Armstrong, is there any public comment?
I see none.
Okay, there being none, we'll skip that, which we move on to number four, the Board of Education Candidate Interviews. This is to fulfill the spot taken when it was vacated by Mr. Drizal as he stepped down. And we've received a number of candidates that have submitted their information, and we're going to have interviews today. So, our first candidate couldn't be with us in person, but she was kind enough to be here by video, and this is Rashawn Walker. Hello, Rashawn, can you see us?
Hello, everybody.
Okay, we can hear you. Good. And you are the first candidate. We don't do this very often, so we're sort of going to work our way through this as well. But what we'd like to do is give you an opportunity to have up to two minutes to give kind of a opening statement about you, about whatever you want to say about why you want to be on the school board, and then we have some questions that we'll present to you, and then we'll be done.
Okay. So, my name is Rashawn Walker, and I am a proud member of District 1-5-8 School District, and I have a recent graduate from Huntley High School, and I also have two other children in the district. And the reason that I would like to be a part of the school board is because I've always been involved in community service, and I also work in public service and have for over two decades, and I feel like it's a very important role. I took my very first oath of office at the age of 18, and I take it very seriously, public oath of office that is, when I joined the military. And since then, I've worked for government for over two decades, as I stated. And I just felt like being a part of the school district would enhance my knowledge of what all we're doing in the school district. I think that District 1-5-8 is a great school district, and it's one of the reasons that I actually moved to the community. When I was transitioning, my children and my family, I did look up the different school areas and look at what they were doing across the country, and decided that Huntley was moving in the direction that I would like, or District 1-5-8 was moving in the direction that I would like to see my children enhanced in. So, I've always been involved with the school board. I was previously involved at their old school district. So, I just think that learning exactly what goes on in our school district would enhance my knowledge of just being a community member and being able to assist not only my children but other children in the district.
Very good. Thank you very much. Okay, we have a series of questions here, and what we'll do is we'll go down, starting with Ms. Melendi, and we'll ask a question. Feel free to answer it as detailed as you'd like, and then we'll move on to the next one.
Okay. Hi, Rashawn. Hi, Ms. Melendi.
Probably, yeah.
Okay. What do you see as the board's roles and responsibilities?
I see the board's role is to make sure that we are serving our children and the school district overall well, that we're enhancing our children's learning environment and giving them the very best that we can offer.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. What do you believe are some of the strengths you can bring to the board, and how do you think that can apply to some of the functions of the board?
I heard what are the strengths that I could bring to the board, and what was the other?
Yeah, I'll reread it. It's what do you believe are some of the strengths you can bring to the board, and how do you think that can apply to some of the functions of the board?
So, I think one of the strengths that I bring is leadership, because I have been doing it, like I said, for over two decades. I also think that in addition to being in a leadership position, I've also been in teams where I have been a part of a team. And what I think I bring to the board in that regard is that with my experience and my ability to make everybody feel included is one of my strengths that I bring to the board.
What are some short and long-term goals that you would like to see the board consider or accomplish?
Well, short-term goals, just to, like I said, to make our school board and our community more diverse and more inclusive for everyone. Long-term, just to kind of be a resource, to help in any way that I can, to make sure that every child has the experience that my children are having in the district.
Okay. Very good. I was remiss. I should have introduced everybody. Can you see our names on here, or?
I can see Dr. Rowe, and I can see, let me see, if I can make it bigger. No, I can't see that.
Okay. Okay. We have Leslie Melendi, Tony Quagliano, Bill Garin, I'm Michael Fleck. This is Dr. Rowe, Superintendent, of course. We have Paul Troy and Kevin Gentry as well. Okay. What areas of education do you see the district excelling in, excelling at, and what areas do you feel need the most attention?
Overall, I think that the district excels, and I mean, just looking at my own children's growth since they've been in the district, they're both, all of my children are strong in math and reading. And the area that I think we could enhance in, again, is just like the diversity and inclusion piece, and making all of our children more well-rounded and ready for the community as a whole.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Mr. Troy. If you can see me above the monitor here.
The camera is on, directly on Dr. Rowe, from what I can see, so, sorry, I can't see you, but I can hear you.
That's okay. Thank you. As a board member, you are a liaison for the community to the school district. How do you envision handling this responsibility and communicating correspondence from community members to the school district?
So, in my everyday position, I am the liaison between the court, the federal court system, local law enforcement, state and county law enforcement. So, I think I will do well in that regard, because I understand the importance of disseminating information to its proper place and letting the people that need to make the decision, the ultimate decision, make that decision. So, just collecting the information, disseminating it to where it needs to go, making sure they have a full understanding of what the information is, and making sure that the person that I'm disseminating the information to understands what the issue is or the concern, and kind of being a bridge between the two. So, I do that every day, and I think that I could do that well for the school district.
Thank you.
I'm the other guy off in the corner that you may not be able to see, but question I have for you is, given your personal and professional responsibilities, do you feel you have the time and sufficient time and energy to devote to the requirements of being on the board?
Yes. So, I think that I will make, well, not I think, I know I can make the time, because it is an important endeavor, and I'm not interested in being an excited board member, meaning just to have the title and not be involved. So, definitely, I will make it a priority and make sure that I'm involved and that I'm at the meetings. This particular meeting came after I'd already scheduled two trips to work, and I do take my areas of responsibility very seriously, so you can rest assured that I will be there.
Thank you.
How would you handle the request if approached by an individual or a special interest group?
What kind of special interest group? Give me an example, I guess, what I'm asking.
Of a special interest group?
Say, say a, yeah, special ed or like fine arts came to you, and they wanted something, so they came directly to you.
Right, or the band, something like that.
Okay, and they came directly to me asking for whatever it is that they would like?
Right, so, you know, you'll be out in the community, and somebody will just, you know, run into you and say, hey, you know, what about, and they'll ask you something, or try to, you know, get information about something. How would you handle that?
So, I would tell them that I couldn't discuss whatever the issue was, because of course I wouldn't make the decision by myself. I would need to talk to the board, and, you know, and if I'm not really well-versed in that area, or I'm not really sure, I would be honest and tell them that, and let them know that I did back to them, and then I will come back to the board and talk to the person in that area of expertise, and find out if I should then go back to the person, or if the person on the board who handles that area of expertise would like to go back to the person.
Okay. Thank you.
What kind of relationships should a district slash the board have with its community, parents, and families?
I think they should have an open approach with their community and their families, so that the families and the community feels welcomed, and feel like that if and when issues arise, that they can come to the board and feel confident that we'll handle them, and we'll talk, we will at least work through them.
And what do you believe are the current challenges facing education school boards?
Well, in our district, it doesn't seem like it's such an issue, but I would probably say finances would be one of the main areas. And then with this political climate, I mean, I don't know how else to say that. Well, with the polarization in our communities now, with all the, you know, the politics and all the different things, I think that can very easily get snowballed and separate communities. So, I think it's important that the board keeps an open, an honest approach, and tries to, again, include and make sure that we all feel welcome in the community. I think that's a part of the board's responsibility, in my opinion.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for your time, and thank you very much for your comments and your answers. This concludes the interview at this time. We're going to finish with everybody, then we'll be going into closed session to deliberate, and we'll let you know.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time.
Do you have any final questions or comments for us?
I do have one question. So, we talked about me not wanting to be a silent member of the board. So, if I am chosen to be a part of the board, is there some type of training that I will go through to kind of prepare me for the area or the role that I would be expected to do on the board?
That's a really good question. There is, actually. We were members of the Illinois Association of School Boards, and there's certain training that's been mandated by the legislature for school board members to go through. So, you'll learn about certain things related to some of the statutes that govern us, and how we serve in our role. And then you'll also learn some other things specifically related to this particular board. And so, any new member would go through that training by a certain time, and it's, there's a little bit of a baptism by fire, where we all will sit here and kind of watch the process. It's, I will say this, that the, I'm one of the newer members, being here for five years or so, and it took me quite a few meetings to kind of realize the process. It took me even longer to realize that we're on a calendar, and so every year, there's certain meetings at certain time of the year, and we cover certain things. So, it really takes about that long to really get comfortable with it, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, it takes about a five-year cycle before you?
Exactly. Yes. I'm still learning, so.
Well played.
Yes. Yeah, it took everybody else much less. Okay.
Yeah. I just want, I mean, like I said, if I am chosen, I just want to make sure that I'm doing the best possible job for our community. So, I just, that was one of my questions, because I wanted to know, like, about the training.
Okay, very good. Now, the way, one more thing. The way it works is, if there's an appointment, then there's going to be an election for that seat next April. If you are appointed, would you consider running in the April election as well?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anybody else have anything else?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for your time. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you. Have a good evening, everyone.
Okay.
You too.
Thank you.
I was going to say Joe McCarthy, but I think that's the wrong one.
This is stock. I think I saw Mr. Carter.
We're ready for our next one. Can you get Chris a couple minutes to clear up? Thanks for setting that up.
Yeah, it's good stuff.
She was on phone, which is why she, it worked.
Nice job, Siri.
He's not, he's not an Apple guy. Oh, he is an Apple guy. Hey, Google.
At the hot seat.
This is the hot seat.
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
Good evening.
Should we just get started?
Well, I'll introduce myself. Make yourself comfortable, and we'll explain the process. Okay, you have something to drink? Good.
I am good.
Okay. My name is Mike Fleck. I'm the president of the board. We have Leslie Melendi, Tony Quagliano, Bill Garin, probably know Scott Rowe, the superintendent, Paul Troy, and Kevin Gentry.
Hello.
So, what we're going to do is, we're going to take a little time to ask you some questions, but before we do that, we'll give you a couple minutes to kind of just have an opening statement of any nature that you want. Then, we'll follow up with a few questions after that, and then that should conclude the interview. When we're done with the interviews, we're going to be going into closed session to deliberate, and we'll consider a candidate. Okay?
Sounds great.
So, with that, the floor is yours. Go free.
Thank you. So, 10 years ago, I, my wife and I, she's of German descent, I made a critical life decision to stay in Huntley. And I'll tell you further about, I'll tell you about that further. But I'd like to start off by introducing myself. My name is Chris Carter. I'm an immigrant who migrated to the United States over 30 years ago. In many ways, I am one of your constituents, and I embody a significant, yet relevant, populate size of your, of the school district's population. And I say that not because I think I'm special, or I have, there's something magical about it. It's the reality. If you look at the statistics, Huntley's population has grown between 2,000 and now close to 350 percent. That means you have a dynamic community that's growing and continues to grow. And with that, there's going to have, there's going to be a lot of diversity and a lot of people of different persuasions and thoughts. So, I say my wife is of German, is a German immigrant, and I am a Jamaican immigrant, because in many ways, I think Huntley embodies those things. And when we made the decision to stay in Huntley, it was because we saw that it's a very, we, first of all, one of the significant decisions, the significant points that helped us make the decision, is because Huntley is a dynamic, it's a dynamic community. It has a wonderful, wonderful school district, and we felt that it would be a good place to raise our kids. So, today, we have two beautiful kids who are multilingual, multi-ethnic, multi-racial, and multi-religious. And in many ways, I think that's what Huntley is all about. So, with that, I'd like to, you know, start having a conversation around why I can make a bigger case in terms of why I think I would be a good candidate for the board. So, that's my opening statement. I think I have a lot more to share with you, but I'll allow you, or I'll answer whatever questions you may have, and then hopefully, you know, you can make the decision, not because of what I've said, but because of the fact that are you looking for a board member who has the children's best heart, best interest at heart, who thinks about the future generation, not just for the sake of saying, you know, we have a type of being a board member. So, with that, I think I've gone well beyond my two minutes, and I'll have a seat, and we'll get started. Thank you.
What do you see as the board's roles and responsibilities?
I think a board, a board has several roles. One is oversight, governance, advocacy, cheerleading, and ensuring that there's compliance across the board. And so...
Thank you.
What do you believe are some of the strengths you can bring to the board, and how do you think that can apply to some of the functions of the board?
I think, given my background, I do have board experience. I'm familiar with the Robert Rules of Order. I'm familiar with the community. Also, I work with key decisions, key decision-makers on a daily basis. So, I understand the importance, as well as the ramifications, of decisions that are made on a daily basis. I'm also a strategic thinker. I, like I've said, I've been a treasurer, I've been a secretary, and now I am the chair of a board myself. So, I understand that it is a thankless job, but yet a significant job.
What are some short and long-term goals that you would like to see the board consider or accomplish?
I think short-term, obviously, whatever the board does, and whatever decision the board makes, I think, first and foremost, we have to keep the children's future in mind. We have to ensure that the children have a place that is conducive to learning, a place that's conducive to growth, and an environment that fosters diversity of thought and reasoning. So, on a short-term basis, I think empowering and working closely with the superintendent to ensure that he's carrying out his job as superintendent. And long-term, I think, as the community continues to grow, the board has to think about different dynamics within the, within the community, whether it's social, economic, or any other demographic reasons, in terms of thinking about what the long-term strategy is for our students.
Okay. What areas of education do you see the district excelling at, and what areas do you feel need the most attention?
I think, you know, again, back to my opening statement, one of the reasons why we chose to stay in the Huntley School District is because of the progress that we've seen, the ranking of the school district. So, I think math, English, and the core subjects are fundamental. The district continues to excel in those. But what I'd like to see more of, I think, would be language skills. Language, various languages introduced into their curriculum. So, I think a couple months ago, I sat right in this room, and there was a conversation around what language should be taught and things like that. So, I think when you look, again, you have a significant Spanish speaking, several different students from different persuasions, not because of where they're from, but because of the fact that, you know, speaking a language, it gives you a different perspective. It sometimes, it often opens your mind. So, I think I'd love to see the school district invest more in education around language.
As a board member, you are a liaison for the community to the school district. How do you envision handling this responsibility and communicating correspondence from community members to the school district?
I think it's important to understand that, and we've had this conversation at my board, one of the most significant things that I've experienced is that communication, and being ambassadors, not just for policies that we advocate, but for the students. And I think the communication between the board and the district has to be aligned, right? So, for example, if Paul says something, it should reconcile with what Leslie says. And it's, Scott, it should also be parallel to what Scott is saying. I think sending a clear message, not just within the message itself, but how the message is, that the message is delivered, will be critical. So, does that answer your question?
Mm-hmm. Yep. Thank you.
Okay. Given your personal and professional responsibilities, do you have the sufficient time and energy to devote to the duties of being on the board?
No. I think if anyone in their right mind, if they understand the importance of the board, being a board member, they would think twice about actually sitting in this seat, because it's not a light responsibility. It's not a light responsibility. It's, like I said before, it's a thankless job. A lot of tough decisions have to be made. A lot of time and effort and energy that's often not seen within this room is put in. But I do think, after having spoken to my wife, I would be ready to take on that challenge.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
How would you handle the request of approach by an individual or a special interest group, such as special ed?
Special ed. Well, I think it's always, it's always important as a board member to, your behavior is very important. So not just the exchange, but the fact that if someone comes to you and they have a concern, I think everyone should, their voices should be heard, but that's probably where it ends, right? Doesn't necessarily mean that because I have a strong voice, I have the loudest voice, and I am the most articulate, that doesn't necessarily mean that my view will be, will out, will crowd out other viewpoints. But I do think it's important to consider other people's opinions, other groups' opinions, and have a conversation, because sometimes they, you know, good things may come wrapped in packages that are, that we often don't expect. So first and foremost, we, as a board member, I would not make a single, a promise to anyone. I would listen, hear what they have to say, and I think if it's worth having a discussion deliberation with fellow board members, we would have that conversation, and we would then follow up. But the reasoning and the rationale behind the decision-making process will be explained.
Thank you.
Sure.
What kind of relationship should a district slash the board have with its community, parents, and families?
I think, and I've talked about this on several occasions with different folks, is the relationship should be, it should be a cordial relationship, but I think the most important thing for the board to understand is that it has one employee, and that's, that's the superintendent. And oftentimes, you know, I've seen it in other boards where board members overreach their, their responsibility, and it sometimes put the executive director, or in this case, the superintendent in a very awkward situation, which sometimes can pit board members and the relationship, especially between the president and the superintendent, has to be, it has to be a lockstep relationship, especially when you're facing, you know, when you're in a room such as this. So I think the relationship with the, the community and the board, it's a cordial relationship, but there has to be a clear understanding that the, the board has one employee, and that's the superintendent.
And what do you believe are the current challenges facing education slash school boards?
I think as, as demographics change, we continue to see a lot of different, you know, given the political climate that we're in, we continue to see a lot of concerning behaviors that are sometimes, you really can't put your arms around it, but as a board, I think we, you would have to empower the superintendent. And so he or she can then work with his administrative staff to put processes and policies in place to ensure that these types of behaviors are addressed, and they're communicated effectively, effectively to the community as well as the staff.
Okay. Thank you for answering those prepared questions. Do you have any other questions or comments that you would like to address to us?
Sure. I think, I have, I have several questions. So the first question I'd like to hear from you, Michael, is what is your biggest challenge working with the board?
Well, that's a good question.
Yes, yes, we'd like to hear it.
Yeah. I'd like to reserve my time. Well, it's, it, the challenges that I see are, the district has grown quite a bit, and it is, it's now kind of leveled off, but it's a very good-sized district with a lot of needs. And we all come from different perspectives on how, how to govern, what policy should be. But we, I think we do a pretty good job of hearing what other people have to say, and then, once it's decided, we speak with one voice to the community, or we give one direction to the superintendent so that he can have his cabinet, and then the certified staff, the non-certified staff, everybody kind of rowing in the same direction. So that, that can be a challenge, and we do have a lot to go over each year, different times of the year, addressing certain things, whether it's the audit, or the budget, or the tax levy, or collective bargaining, and other things. It's, it's, it's something that we have to kind of keep in mind and prepare for, and not just get tunnel vision on thinking about what's just in front of us, but the whole larger picture, the long-term picture. If anybody else would like to answer, feel free. Okay. So we do speak with one voice.
That's important.
Anything else?
So William, from your perspective, what is the, now, I'll turn the question back around to you. What is the short-term and the long-term vision of the board?
You know, we're, we, we work off of a five-year plan here, and then, but we're also focused on all of the day-to-day goals and objectives that the school district has. So we're really looking at both of those things at the same time, all the time, and making sure that we're hitting our marks and all those kinds of things. So that's kind of our short and long-term goals.
So what would make this board member successful, right? From your perspective, right? Given, you've all worked with each other for quite a number of years. What is, what are, if you, if you could give me three characteristics, Kevin?
All right.
That would, that you say, the person who's sitting in that chair will be successful. When we come out and we're speaking to parents, we're speaking to the community, we're all lockstep, we've made a decision, he or she is on the same page with you.
Sure. I think you hit on one of them, and it's kind of understanding the, the role of the board and the, kind of the vision of that structure of how a board should operate in relation to the administration, and how, you know, those roles are, are different, and when those lines blur, it can cause problems. So I think that was probably number one. Number two, I think from the body, everyone on this board is very direct and open in terms of their, their beliefs, their views, their perspectives, but everyone has an ability to be collaborative in solving problems. So from that standpoint, I do sense, from some of your answers, you can have that, that same view of, you'd be very willing to offer up opinions, stand behind why, but then also, you know, work within the, the framework of the team. And then the, the third one I would point to is just the sheer dedication and consistency and, you know, endurance factor of some of the thankless aspects of the job that you mentioned as well, in terms of, it does take time, you do have to labor through a lot, and realizing the importance of, and of each and every topic that's, that's covered, that does take a certain level of perseverance. So that's kind of what I would frame as the three key characteristics.
So Leslie?
Question for you.
What, what makes you get up every day, or what makes you, or, you know, sometimes you'll come and you'll have these recalcitrant parents or members of the community, and what, what makes you not walk away from this job?
I think the thing that we all have in common and that makes us stay here is our passion, our passion for serving the community, our passion for education in the school district. I think we all, somebody said it earlier, we all bring something different to the board, and I think that's what drives us.
Scott, what are you looking for in a board member?
Well, for me, I think most importantly is someone who's willing to, to come and collaborate and bring an, an aspect of the community that, that they represent to the, to the table for the conversation. I think it's, it's important that our school board is a, is a reflective representation of who our community is, so that way that our school district can best serve our students. But most importantly, we have to be, all decisions have to be student-centered. We can't, we can't make decisions that are adult-centered. They have to all be student-driven, and I think this board does an excellent job of that.
Tony?
Yes, sir.
What are you thinking?
Not an easy one.
Yeah, 10 minutes? That's for dinner. Yeah, yeah. What did I miss for dinner tonight? No, that is not what I'm thinking. No, what I'm thinking, what I'm thinking about is, you know, in regards to a good board member, a good board, board member is somebody who's humble, who listens. You have to be an extremely good listener. You have to understand that none of us here are educators, I mean, that are on the board. We're not educational professionals. We have, you know, the superintendent and his staff who are, we have to listen real carefully and weigh what they're telling us, okay, and, and make decisions based on our professional judgments, based on what our life experiences have been. So it's just, as Kevin said, it weighs, you know, it can weigh pretty heavily on you sometimes, the decisions, the gravity of the decisions you're making, because they, they affect a lot of people, and especially the young children. So it's just, I, I get that you understand the seriousness of the role, but it, it is definitely, out of all the community member-type roles, I think Board of Education is definitely the, the highest typed out there, so.
So am I out of time, or do we have?
No, but we're getting close. I don't know if you had one more question or comment.
No, I just, I'd like to close, if I may, by saying that it's, thank you first of all for your time. Again, I understand the importance of your time. I applaud you for continuing to, you know, thinking about our kids. And regardless of who fills this role, I hope sincerely that this is, the person you choose, like you said, has the kids' best interests at heart, because at the end of the day, that's really all that matters. We should always, regardless if we're parents or board members, as leaders of the community, having the children's best interests at heart, their future, their dreams, their aspirations, and their hopes is really what matters. So I want to thank you, and I also want to applaud you for your time and your effort and the diligence that you've put into even going through, you know, the selection of another board member. It shows a lot, and it says a lot. And a lot of times, it's not the, the actual words, but it's the, the meta, the, the things that go behind, and I can see that the board works closely together. I'm, I'm excited to learn and hear that you speak as one voice, and that you listen to the community, and I think what you have here is something significant, and whoever sits in that chair, I wish them the best, and I hope that they appreciate the role. So thank you for your time, and I look forward to coming back and, you know, congratulating whoever that, that new board member is.
Okay. I do have one more comment. This, this is an appointed position, and then the position is open for election in April. And if appointed, would you run in April to keep that position?
I would run. I did get my wife's permission. So if we were to go down the path, and I, you know, was fortunate enough to occupy that chair, absolutely. It's something that, it's, it's a long-term commitment. I don't see it being a, you know, a one-off, or something that you just show up and, and go home.
All right. Well, Mr. Carter, thank you very much for your time. Thank you for your comments and your, and your questions to us. Really appreciate it.
Absolutely. And thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You too. Bye-bye.
It's like an L.
Hi and welcome.
This is my first time seeing you in that seat.
Is this my first time seeing you?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Well, hi, Kim.
Hi, Michael.
How are you?
I'm dandy. How are you, sir?
Good. We're, you've probably done this more than we have, so...
Probably, yeah. Not probably, definitely.
We're coming with our, this is our model for tonight. We're going to allow you a few minutes to say what you want, and then we're going to have some questions, and then we'll follow up with some closing arguments, but I think, close to me, I think I'm in court. Closing arguments with some closing statements.
We're in court here.
So I think Mr. Garen has the first question, though.
Do you know what we do? We have...
That's good. Am I supposed to tell you about myself?
Yeah. For those, that's how Kim always asked the questions of the kids that did the pledge, so. All right. Floor's yours, go ahead.
Well, Dr. Burrell said I should tell you about me, but I think you know as, almost as much about me as I do. I served on the board nearly 22 years, went to all sorts of training, you know, had lots of fun, made a lot of great decisions, made a few mistakes here and there, but mostly I think I was very positive. What else can I tell you? Oh, I can tell you something that you don't know about me. I am now the grandmother of two children. I have a brand-new grandson. He was born six weeks premature on the 2nd of July. He's doing well. He came home from the NICU on Saturday, so he's like this big. I don't really know what I could tell you that you don't already know.
Okay. Well, and when you hear the questions, you'll probably be a part of the point of view, so with that, start with this one.
What do you see as the board's roles and responsibilities?
I feel silly asking.
Well, let her come to her seat.
Well, the board's responsibility is to hire a superintendent, and he's their only employee. We set policy for the school district. We are role models for the school district, and we try really hard, you, tried it really hard to be very positive role models for the school district. That's basically, in a nutshell. I could give you the six things, but, you know, that's okay.
There's no test on the number, so don't worry about it. Okay. What do you believe are some of the strengths you can bring to the board, and how do you think that can apply to some of the functions of the board?
Well, the obvious strengths that I can bring to the board, it is only an eight-month interim position. It's not very long. I think it makes excellent sense to have a person who knows what she or he is doing, because there really isn't a whole lot of time to learn, I guess. So my strengths are the fact that, of my experience and my training that I can bring. And what was the second part of your question, Tony?
And I'll just read the whole thing. What do you believe are some of the strengths you can bring to the board, and how do you think that can apply to some of the functions of the board?
Well, the obvious strengths that I can bring to the board, it is only an eight-month interim position. It's not very long. I think it makes excellent sense to have a person who knows what she or he is doing, because there really isn't a whole lot of time to learn, I guess. So my strengths are the fact that, of my experience and my training that I can bring. And what was the second part of your question, Tony?
And I'll just read the whole thing. What do you believe are some of the strengths you can bring to the board, and how do you think that can apply to some of the functions of the board?
Oh, well, it applies to all the functions of the board. I'm, I'm also well-known in the community. I have respect of not everybody, but most people in the community, and I do think that that helps a lot as well. I volunteered in most every position you can think of, from kindergarten through 12th grade, special ed and gifted ed, and I did mostly fine arts, but I did other things too, and I think those are strengths to bring to the board.
What are some short and long-term goals that you would like to see the board consider or accomplish?
Yeah. Oh, this one I didn't. I would like to see us continue to, long-term, continue to be the lighthouse district, as Mike Scala used to call it, or the destination district, as Dr. Burkey coined it, to be leading the way. And that, long-term, I think, and that's a big, big challenge, and I'd really like to see the district and the board itself continue in that direction. Short-term, nothing comes to mind. Short-term, I, I think you really have to be more aware of what's going on in Springfield, which of course, Ms. Melendez has excellent research through that. I think it's pretty much a no-brainer that the pension shift, pension cost is going to shift to school districts, unfortunately. Unfortunately, putting that off as long as possible would be good. Trying to help them understand what that means for the district would be really great. I think that you need to really consider the budget and how it's going to impact it and how you work around that or work that into the future.
What areas of education do you see the district excelling at? And what areas do you feel need the most attention?
In an organization like District 158, to say what and where do we or do you excel? My goodness, all over the place. I'm really impressed with the way the special needs kids and their programs have come along, though I can see where they still need help. The parents, I think, need help understanding better what the options are for their kids and ways that they can support their kids. I think that's a challenge that you could, that we could as a board, you could as a board, address more strongly. Where we, where you really shine is like all over the place. I'm really, really excited about the dual-language classes that you recently approved. I want to go back and be a kid or my kids will go back and be kids or something. I just, that's something I've always dreamed of. I know that Ms. Lombard also talked about that years ago. So I'm really excited about that. I love the one-to-one. You also have the challenge of reading more and more statistics. It says kids learn more from paper than they do from reading things on digital. I don't know, that's what I'm reading. I don't know if that is true, but I think that that's a challenge to consider. But I also think it's really a huge advantage that we've had this in our district for so long. I think that other places that we shine are at the high school with blended learning, with the academies, and I'm really excited, of course, about the Fine Arts Academy. But I love where the Medical Academy is going and STEM Academy and some of the other things that you're doing at the high school. I love the way that the board and the district has readdressed, is that the right word? Reassigned the way libraries from my school days were, turned them into media centers. It's just a completely different concept. I think that's a huge plus academically for our school district.
So I get the distinction of having the long question.
Oh, good.
As a board member, you are a liaison for the community to the school district. So how do you envision handling this responsibility and communicating correspondence from community members to the district?
How do I handle communicating correspondence?
Yes. How do you handle the responsibility and communicating the correspondence?
Okay. Well, the way I've handled the responsibility in the past is to be very involved in the community. I was a member of the chamber. I went there as a member of the school board and addressed concerns that people might have. I'm also just active in a lot of different ways. Chamber events bring in a lot of different people from all over the district, so that was a good thing. I also work in the community and I volunteer in the community. And so that is how I communicate and listen to the residents of the community. I have been emailed. I have been asked questions on online things. I handle them as positively as I can. I always try to refer, as a board member, I always try to refer people's questions to the proper administrator. Why does my kid have so much homework? Well, I don't know. Those kind, I mean, but I can say, well, the person you need to speak with is your child's teacher. And I think I've handled that very well. I've also shared with other board members what has been communicated to me in an open session or, you know, unless it's a closed session matter.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Given your personal and professional commitments, do you have the time and energy to devote to this role?
Absolutely.
Do you have any idea what it takes?
I have a little bit of an idea. Three weeks from today, I will officially be a senior citizen. I turn 62. Scary. And I am mostly retired, although not totally retired. And my husband is completely retired. He's retired. Gives me a lot more time. But we have two dogs and so we're not traveling the world like other old retirees do. But yes, I'm fully aware of the time commitment. It's been enormous in the past and then it's been not so much. And then it kind of goes back and forth. And I'm fully aware of that.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
How would you handle the requests if approached by an individual or special interest group?
Well, I have had that happen to me in the past. And I always explain that there's an opportunity for visitors to speak at the beginning and the end of every regular meeting, at the beginning of the committee, of the whole meeting. If they have other interests, oh, well, like I said, my kid has too much homework. I think that no one should be allowed to have peanut butter in school so that my child could sit with other kids. I mean, that's a legitimate concern. But I always direct them, I have always directed them to the proper person, the proper channel. And I don't, I have never tried to resolve a person's, you know, issue on my own because as a board member, you have one vote.
What kind of relationship should a district slash the board have with its community, parents, and families?
A very open one. I think you need to be, and I, as you know, I was the one who really, really pushed for a long time to have paperless meetings, have more things available digitally, to leave the things on the website so people could access it very easily at any time of the day or night. I think that's really helpful for people. I love the way that you've changed the way the newsletter puts information out, but it does give people information about where to seek out more information. I think that as a board, as a district, you need to continue to do things. In the past, Dr. Burkey and Mr. Altmeier used to go, and I assume you still do or will with Dr. Rowe, go to, for example, Sun City and talk about the community and the thing that you do with the chamber. They have the state of the chambering of the state of the district. And I think, or the town, I mean, and the state of the district. I think that's incredibly helpful to help the community understand who we are, what we're doing, what our goals are. I think also more recently, there's been a lot of press about what the county board wants the school boards to follow in their footsteps. And I personally think that the board should address them and suggest that they should follow in the footsteps of school boards. Because school board members take in zero dollars. We, there is no salary. You don't have, you don't have salaries, I already said. You don't have any insurance. You don't have pension. You don't have any of those things. I'd like to see them step forward and offer that same service to their community as you guys do right now.
And what do you believe are the current challenges facing education school boards?
Well, there's that one. I just mentioned, there's the pension shift, pension cost shift, as I mentioned earlier. I think going forward, it's really, really important to continue to communicate what it is you're doing, what you've done, how you are handling the finances that you're given in a responsible manner, that you're not going hog-wild. I love the fact that you guys just recently signed or approved working with solar energy because of the money that will save in the future. I love the way you took a lot of time, even though we made fun of you in the audience. You took a lot of time and really, really thought out how it will affect the board and the district, not only today and next year, but 20 years from now. It's not always been the case that boards of this district thought about how it affects the district 20 years from now. So I do see those as challenges and I don't see them as insurmountable, non, whatever. I don't see them as being something that you can't cover, whatever.
Okay. Well, thanks, Kim. Do you, I have a question for you regarding, as you know, it's an appointed position that would open up the seat for the April election. What are your intentions on running?
As of right today, I don't intend to run. I am a woman, however, and I heard somewhere that it's their prerogative to change their mind. But no, I really don't expect to do that. I would just, I would really like, and the reason that I applied for it is because, well, A, I found that I missed it way more than I thought I would. But B, it just makes so much sense to me to put a person there because it's only eight months. Who knows? Who understands the district, where, how everything works? I mean, I was at the last three board meetings. I've kept up to date with what's going on. I noticed that the board packet is not available for this upcoming meeting yet. But when it is, I'll read it. And I know it's weird, but I have been following all of that. So, yeah, I don't at this time expect to run again. I am excited that you're doing things this way. And I like the idea that more people are interested in the board. That's always a tricky thing to get anyone to want to give up that much time.
Very good. Well, you get the last word, so if you have a final statement, question, comment?
I have a huge amount of respect for you. I'd love to serve with you again.
Right.
Say all?
Yeah. Yeah.
All of you. I thought I said. Mike's my favorite.
Very good. Okay.
Is that all you need? Oh, I do have one other question. You're going to take action at the meeting on Thursday. Are you going to inform people tonight or are you going to wait till Thursday?
I'll be in touch tomorrow.
Pardon me?
Yeah. I think we'll be in touch tomorrow.
You'll be in touch tomorrow? Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks, Kim. Appreciate your time. Okay. Ready for Jamie?
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is Jamie Wambacher and thank you for coming today. Thank you for submitting your application for this position. The way we're going about this is we're giving you, it's about 20 minutes. We're giving you a few minutes to kind of make an opening statement. We have a series of questions we'll ask you. Then we'll go back to you if you have any questions for us or a final statement. And then we'll wrap it up.
Okay.
Okay. So the floor is yours.
Can I say first? The only person that knows me on the board said my name wrong. It's Wambacher, not banker.
Wow. That was a test.
Okay, I'm just going to start with, you already received my letter of interest in my resume, which, by the way, is the first time I've prepared a resume since 2003, when I graduated from law school. Because I've stayed with the same law firm since then through various buyouts and provisions. I grew up in Cedar Rapids, Iowa. My family and I moved to Illinois in 2003 when I finished law school. I've been married to my husband Chad for about 18 years. And we have two daughters, Olivia, who's 16 and will be a junior, and Haley, who is 14 and will be a sophomore. We lived for the first 10 years in Illinois and Harvard. During our time in Harvard, I regularly attended school board meetings. I made public comment at many meetings. I sent emails to the board members and made phone calls to the board members pretty regularly. And if I'm honest, I have to say that I don't think that there was any of those contexts that were ever in a positive context. They were very negative most of the time. Because I was usually pretty unhappy with the education that my kids were receiving there. After a while, I did decide to join the Harvard Community Education Foundation. And while I was on the education foundation, we hit a million-dollar endowment. And that gave us a really good opportunity to give back to the schools for the stuff that the district wasn't allowed to do or didn't have the funding to do. And that changed my perception of the school board in Harvard. We moved to Talmore in 2014 when my kids were starting in middle school, 6th and 7th grade. And as I sit here tonight, this is the first time that I've ever attended a District 158 school board meeting. I've never contacted any of the board members. And I think it's because I'm pretty happy with everything that you guys have been doing. And I do attribute that to the policies that you have in place. And I think that things are moving in the right direction in this district. Other than semi-regularly looking at board minutes or board briefs online, I really have had not much involvement in the board at all. So over the last few weeks, people have asked me why I was interested or why I put my name in. And I've been thinking a lot about it. And I think, two things. Yesterday, District 50 Harvard administrator asked me, did you put your name in because you're unhappy or because you're happy? And I'm decidedly very happy with the way that this district is going. And I would like to continue to see it move in the direction that it has been. And the second thing that kind of came to mind was, over the last two years with my kids in high school, at orientation, we always hear the speech about, you know, get involved in activities. You're going to get a lot more out of your education when you're here, if you do. And my kids have been involved in athletics, clubs, and they're both very, very good students. And they have such pride in this district that I think as their parent, what a better way to be, lead them than to be involved myself. So with that, that's who I am.
What do you see as the board's roles and responsibilities?
I think the over is to set the policies and the strategies for where the district's going to go and let the administration kind of follow suit with what the board is establishing as policies.
Okay. What do you believe are some of the strengths you can bring to the board? And how do you think that can apply to some of the functions of the board?
Strengths, I'm a pretty outgoing person. I tend to get along with just about everyone. I'm not afraid to have my opinion known. And I think that a good, effective board of any type, there has to be people who are not afraid to state their opinions, but also listen to the opinions of the other people and come up with the right decisions. And I think that that is something that I'm capable of doing.
What are some short and long-term goals you'd like to see the board consider or accomplish?
Wow. I don't know. One thing that I was very happy to see the board recently move towards was dual-language because my kids were in dual-language in District 50. And now, as high school students, they're completely fluent. They just went on a missions trip and could speak Spanish to children there and had an amazing time. And when we moved into this district in middle school, there was no Spanish other than the one semester of Spanish. And they did kind of get behind, so I was very happy to see that kind of thing. So I think more curriculum-based things like that, that give kids opportunities later would be important.
What areas of education do you see the district excelling at? And what areas do you feel need the most attention?
I think that the, I am only really familiar with the high school from what I've seen with my children. But I think that the opportunities of vast, different classes, AP classes and the Medical Academy, down to so many different art classes that one of my child is really interested in. So I think just the variety, because it's not a, every kid's going to do the same thing every time. Was there a second part of that question? I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. What areas do you feel need the most attention?
I don't know.
As a board member, you are a liaison for the community to the school district. How do you envision handling this responsibility and communicating correspondence from community members to the school district?
I think two parts, like, I am pretty active in the community. I am out and about, so I assume that people would probably approach you and state their mind at times about what they think, one way or the other. And then I think the second part of that communication, you know, and I'm assuming that means written communications or emails or something like that. And I think have to follow FOIA and whatever FOIA requires in terms of turning it over to everybody else.
Thank you.
Given your personal and professional commitments, do you have, you feel you have the time and energy to devote to being on the board?
I do. I think part of the reason I was considering it as well is, probably you all know with high schoolers, like, they don't want to be around anymore. And I've seen that I have a lot more time on my hands to, what am I going to do? Because there's a lot of nights that they're not home and we're home.
Fair enough. Thank you.
How would you handle the requests if approached by an individual or a special interest group?
I guess it would depend on, I mean, what that individual, if they're asking for, and a special interest group. I'm not political. The only political.
So like social education or within the school environment, like the Fine Arts Department?
I think it depends on what it is and whether it's something that the board has determined is something that needs to be addressed as a board versus something that somebody's just reaching out to me individually to try to sway me one way or the other. I'm not really sure. What? Because I've never been in that role, I don't really know how that would happen, I guess.
What kind of relationship should a district slash the board have with its community, parents, and families?
I think mutual respect, that the board needs to have the position of authority that... that the members of the community are comfortable coming and saying, we're unhappy with this, or we're happy with this, and we respect you as a board to do the right thing. And I think that the board also has an obligation to the people that ultimately elect them to make sure that their concerns are raised and known.
And what do you believe are the current challenges facing education slash school boards?
Funding. I think always is gonna be a big one, and particularly in this state. And the changing culture of social media and the way that colleges are and what ultimately, when you have a student graduate from the district, what they need to be prepared for.
Our last prepared question is, this is an appointed position, which would be appointed until the next general election, which is in April. If appointed, would you plan on running in the general election?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have any final questions or comments for us?
Not really.
Okay. Very good. Well, thank you, Ms. Wambacher, for your time. We really appreciate you applying and your questions and your comments.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. So, that completes the candidate interviews. I will now make a motion to go into closed session.
Did we lose one?
Yes. Yeah. For those of you that, there was one candidate who withdrew.
Then, no.
Okay. Okay. We have a motion and a second to go into closed session. We need a roll call for that.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mr. Fleck?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi?
Yes.
Mr. Garen?
Yes.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Okay. We're in a closed session at 8:10, 8:10 PM for the record.
This is Smooth Hits from FM 100. It's 86 degrees in Algonquin. Enjoy your ride.